And so we begin, in the name of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, who are hereby directed to notify and summon its inhabitants of the town of Mashpee, or qualified to vote at the elections, to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday the 6th day of May, 2018, 7:00 AM. The purpose is to act on the articles contained in the following marks. This is the special town meeting, and it's Article One. See if the town will vote to appropriate transfer of some of money from revenue available for appropriation to the Snow and Ice account, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $23,000 from the revenue available for appropriation to the Snow and Ice account.
Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Mr. Moderator, Finance Committee, voted by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on this special town meeting, Article One? Seeing none, all those approve, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Pass. Article Two, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $15,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Rand Scrapping Account, Scraping Account, for the purpose of providing funds to be used for Rand's safe boating access, any of the salt freshwater ramps. This will improve safe boating access to and from the Rand, we're getting into their action there, two. Mr. Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $15,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Rand Scraping Expense Account, for a purpose of providing funds to be used for Rand's safe boating access, any of the salt freshwater ramps.
Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Two by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Two? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Two is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yes. Article Three, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer of the available funds, $45,000, to the Human Resources accrued benefit account, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Goddard.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $45,000 from revenue available for appropriation to the Human Resources accrued benefit account.
Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Three is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yes. When again, if anyone wanted to discuss an article, please come to the microphone, give your name and your address, please, for the record. Thank you. Article Four, see if the town will appropriate transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Six, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserved, the following amounts, $13,896, 10 percent open space recreational purposes; $13,896, 10 percent for historic purposes; $13,896, 10 percent for community housing purposes, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Goddard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Six, to reserve from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserved, in the following amounts, $13,896, 10 percent open space recreational purposes; $13,896, which equals 10 percent for historic purposes, and $13,896, 10 percent community housing purposes.
Second.
Second.
Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Four? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Four say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, yes. Pass. Article Five, the two-thirds vote, see if the town will vote to reauthorize the appropriation and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve for appropriation, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $161,900 for the purpose of extending the time limit of the appropriation fund, the acquisition of the property located at 9 Washington Road, Mashpee, identified on Assessors Act 44, Part 11, comprised of 4.212 acres, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the fee interest in said property by gift, purchase, or eminent domain taken for open space and passive recreational use purposes. Said land to be held under the jurisdiction control of the Conservation Commission in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 8C, or take any other action related to it. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to reauthorize the appropriation and transfer of the sum of $161,900 from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted reserve, for the purpose of extending the time limit of the appropriation, to fund the acquisition of the property located at 9 Washington Road, Mashpee, identified on cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire the fee interest in said property by gift, purchase, or eminent domain taken. The fee interest in said property by gift, purchase, or eminent domain taken, I said that twice, for open space passive recreational use purposes, said land to be held under the jurisdiction and the control of Conservation Commission, in accordance with the provision of General Law, see 40, Section 8C.
Okay, that motion was seconded, and it talked about the Assessors Act 44, Part 11, comprised of 4.212 acres. Okay, so the motion made, seconded.
Just make sure that the motion included the language of the third line for the appropriation in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five. I think that's good enough.
I will include, in the motion, it talks about reserve for appropriation in accordance with the Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five. All right, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of four to one.
Discussion on Article Five? Yes.
Hi, Corinne Wickel, G7, River Road. Is the $161,900 for the, it says extending the time limit, is this for the purchase of the property, or because then it says to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain taken? So what is this, what's going to take the property?
It authorized, I promise, the town meeting voted for you to authorize the purchase of this property. There was some issue with the title, there were hard to resolve, so the time period elapsed. This article reauthorizes the ability to purchase, in addition to the eminent domain which would allow us to take it, with the consent of the R, and it was declared the title was.
Okay, thank you.
Another discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, the two-thirds vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Two-thirds. Article Six, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer of the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserved, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $320,000 for the purpose of funding the restoration of the Upper Washington River System in the Johns Pond Conservation Land, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $320,000 from the Community Preservation Fund budgeted for appropriation reserved, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the restoration of the Upper Washington River System in the Johns Pond Conservation Land, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Six is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space slash recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $240,500 for the purpose of funding the Gardner Boggs slash Upper Child River Restoration Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $240,500, $10, from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the Garden Gardens Upper Child River Restoration Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Seven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seven is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space slash recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $44,996, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Community Garden Reconstruction Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related to it. Mr. Goddard.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $44,996 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Community Garden Reconstruction Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eight by a vote of five to one.
We have 257 registered voters so far in the House. Discussions on Article Eight? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eight is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Approved. Article Nine, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space slash recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $123,500 for the purpose of funding proposed improvements to the Adamland Park, to include the construction of a half basketball court, the installation of a shade shelter and a picnic area, and the installation of additional playground equipment, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Goddard.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $123,500 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent open space recreational reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purposes of funding proposed improvements to Adamland Park, to include the construction of a half basketball court, the installation of a shade shelter, and a picnic area, and installation of an additional playground equipment, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second. Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of six to zero.
You get to get in with those community preservation. Any discussion on Article Nine? Yes, sir.
Big wire, thirteen seas, probably. How big is this, the Community Preservation Fund? You're far in my age. How much money is this, the New York Fund?
The New York Preservation Council has, at the beginning of this year's cycle, had somewhere in the order of $4 million available, and that accounts for some of the debt service on old land and projects, as well as the money that's been approved from Washington.
Those six articles, as well as prior, and up to five as well.
Sorry, sorry. It's locked.
Spending about $2.1 million out of the account.
By the way, we got 14, 15 out of the base in the funding.
This is normally what we do every year.
We have two funding cycles, one in the fall, one in spring. We got a lot more than normal in a normal year.
Does the money come through from the state?
There's some portion that's matched by the state under the CPA program. We got a little more on the arsenal to do, voted on previously, accounting for the fact that the state first, the change was higher, and it was projected on business last year, when we set it up down in the west states.
Yes.
And just always to go, when my children were small, we would take them to that type of beach all the time, but we couldn't let them play on the media facilities that were there because they were closed all the time from beer bars. There was the basketball hoop in the parking lot, and that presented obvious problems with parking, but it did seem to be, to become a hangout place for dealers and users, for illegal underage drinking, that type of thing, probably adding, and a police officer who had to drive down there, run dust, and see, see what was going on down there. So I'd love to see additional play equipment for young children, as an ideal beach for small children. I was devastated when it got to Maryville, but maybe they could add a more friendly one. At any rate, if you do need another basketball court, there is one at Herodians on the road that is, but I think perhaps the community garden, that you want to add a recreation area to, that would be a fine location also for basketball court or half court. It does butt the community park there, so I think it would be a much better location if it would be more easily monitored, and it wouldn't be such a tucked away place as it would be at the park.
Second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Ready to come out of the mic.
Steve Peters, Resul Drug. I listened to what the lady told me, I'd say, and I have to disagree that basketball is a whole big sell-to-the-drugs or basketball thing here. I would actually say this is the exact opposite. I think that teenagers, kids, need a place to play, and you need more places like this to put up. I don't think that taking out the basketball hoop, or not replacing the basketball hoop, is a good idea. So I think we need more sports, more baseball games, doing outdoors.
All right, seeing. Good show. My name is Akwin, 53 Main Street, Mashpee, Massachusetts. I just want to say that along with the basketball court, there could be other things for middle-aged young men and women. It doesn't only have to be a basketball court, it could be pull-up bars, things like that, physical fitness things outside, right on the beach. They have different types of rigs, like drink things to do, Olympic-type equipment for training, and things like that, and it's just a positive thing to do outside. A lot of times people go to gyms indoors, and that's not really where they want to be, especially as they are people. We love being outside, especially by the water. And I think this would bring a more positive vibe, and I feel like people would definitely appreciate it, and they would be able to take advantage of it. And that's all.
Thank you. Please help us up here, and that gentleman's very good, and he wants your voice. Don't stand so close to the mic, just keep your voice up, because the acoustics are not clear. All right, seeing no other discussion, all those in favor of Article Nine is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent historic reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $285,000 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee War Memorial Community Park Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $285,000 from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent historic reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee War Memorial Community Park Project, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Motion made, seconded.
Second part is kind of right.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of six to zero. Discussion on Article Ten? Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is Patrick Flynn, another tenant of our tribe. My question is, I have two questions. My question is, in 2018, we passed Article Seven, the transfer money to build the walk block, I'm sorry, the Mashpee American Revolution War Veterans Monument, is this monument, is this proposed monument, including that, or is that all wrong together?
In addition to.
My second question is, is this reference to six armed services, and mine options at five?
In addition to. Over to you, James.
Any further discussion on Article Ten? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Article Eleven, see if the town will appropriate, will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent historic reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, $150,742, for the purpose of funding the historic document restoration project, Phase One, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of five to zero. Discussion on Article Five? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Five is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Yes. Article Six, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund, 10 percent historic reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the historic document restoration project, Phase One, including necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Second. Motion made, seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of five to zero.
Discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eleven is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Yeah, you can work on it for tonight, or whatever.
Sorry, my name is Tom Maceo, 587.
We already took the vote, I'm sorry.
He's stopping, he's on his way out of this chair.
Sorry. All right, we took the vote, go ahead, stay with me one second.
My question was, what exactly does this document restoration project do? Does it restore particular historical documents pertaining to the town's history that need to be restored because they are dimmed, or is this just to restore the document?
Yeah, there's no audio on TV.
This particular project restores old town records from the turn of the last century, largely old cash records, property records, stores that included them to archives and has buying books that allow them to be accessed and viewed by the public, not available to them.
Just again, having to take anybody's comments, just make sure you get up to the microphone, or raise your hand and walk away. All right, we did take a vote, and it was approved. Article Twelve, see if the town will vote to appropriate transfer from the Community Preservation Fund historic preservation reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section Five, the sum of $400,000 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Washington Restoration Project, including any necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Said sum to be dispersed subject to contingent upon prior execution of the memorandum of understanding between the fund recipient and the board of selectmen, establishing milestones for full project funding and a schedule for release of the subject appropriated CPA funds. And further, subject to the recording of a preservation restriction, to assure that the subject historic property's intrinsic values will be preserved through any subsequent ownership by restricting the demolition or alteration of its significant historic features. All is recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate transfer of the sum of $400,000 from the Community Preservation Fund historic preservation reserve, in accordance with the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section Five, for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Washington Restoration Project, including any necessary cost and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee. Said sum to be distributed subject to and contingent upon prior execution of the memorandum of understanding between the fund recipient and the board of selectmen, establishing milestones for the full project funding and the schedule for release of subject appropriated CPA funds, and the relation thereto, and further subject to the recording of the preservation restriction, to assure that the subject historic property's intrinsic values will be preserved through any subsequent ownership by restricting the demolition or alteration of significant historic features, all as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator?
Hold.
I move that the motion under this article be voted pursuant to secret ballot.
Well, first of all, let's have a, we have a second on the original motion. Now we have a request to have a secret ballot. Do I have a second on that?
You have a second?
Okay. Not hearing one, that's defeated.
I'll give a second, yes?
Yes.
Yeah, second, I'll give him a second.
It was a second.
Okay, speak up. All right, discussion on having a secret ballot for Article Twelve.
What does it mean? What's a secret ballot?
Okay, back up. So they're requesting a secret ballot, meaning that everybody would have to get up, go to a, we'll have tables and yes or no pieces of paper for you to vote. It's a secret vote, so nobody can see if you're opposed or not opposed. It's a request, you don't have to vote, it takes a two-thirds vote, so open to discussion on the secret ballot only. You got to vote on it, so you can vote it down. All right, no discussion on it. Those people in favor of a secret ballot, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's defeated. Okay. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of four to one.
Okay, discussion on Article Twelve?
No discussion.
Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article Twelve is moved, say aye.
by the trust and provided further that at the end of each fiscal year, the trust shall ensure that all expenditures of said funds are reported to the Community Preservation Committee.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 13 by a vote of five to one.
Any discussion on Article 13? Yes?
Hi, my name is Jill Allen, 432 Catoot Road. Who exactly is the Housing Trust?
The Affordable Housing Trust is town board, is comprised of the five members of the Board of Selectmen, and then represented, there's nine total, and then representatives from the housing authority, the Affordable Housing Committee, and other appointees at large by the Board of Selectmen. And so, the purpose behind this is the Affordable Housing Trust has the ability to acquire property or dispense of property that's been designated for affordable housing purposes and engage in contracts for housing development without coming back to town meeting for specific authorization for those projects. And so, the trust was set up several years ago and has not been particularly active until the last couple of years, and we've been moving projects through the process and have a bid out right now, 950 Falmouth Road. And so, it's an ability to, by putting money that is set aside, the CPC money, into the Affordable Housing Trust, it allows the trust to act more quickly than we would otherwise have be able to if an opportunity arises to do something in the area of development of affordable housing for the residents of Mashpee. But we need money in that account in order to be able to do that. This is the beginning of a process of seeding money into the Affordable Housing Trust so that the trustees of that board can take advantage of housing opportunities when they present themselves.
So, in other words, this is giving the selectmen, plus four members at large, a sum of money to do with it as they wish for affordable housing?
For affordable housing purposes only, yes.
And you all, the selectmen, or the select board, plus these additional people, will be preparing all the information and processing all the billing and everything like that at your own?
The Board of the Trust meets separately and separately posted public meetings. We take votes on whether, what actions to take, and those are executed by the Town Manager's Office staff for the procurement process and the town finance team for managing the payment requisitions that come from those contracts.
So, you're gonna be putting more work on the people at the town hall in order to do this? Is that what you're saying?
What we're saying is that it falls within the job description of the people in town hall to execute town contracts, so, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion on Article 13? Yes, sir.
My name's Ernie Barrows, I live at 201 of Schumit Road. And you wanna take $300,000 out of the Community Preservation Fund? Is that what I'm getting?
That's what the article calls for, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious, you get that kinda money, and that, do you have a specific place for that money?
A specific project in mind right now? No.
Good. Because I approached the selectmen and the town manager about the problem about the pickleball park they put in and the noise it's created, and how it's been a distraction and it's really been a nuisance down at the end of Schumit Road. I got a petition from all the people that live down there on how much it's distracted everybody and how much it's really become a nuisance, the noise is incredible. In fact, the town manager went down there and listened to it and realized how bad it was. Now, I approached you back in, I believe in the spring and over the summer about doing something about this, and they said they were gonna do something about it. Well, obviously, you've got money, I'm just curious what you've done before you take that money, what you've done about the noise down there and what they're gonna do about it, seeing you do have enough money to take care of something if they to put up a wall or whatever.
Okay, you know, I'm cognizant of your concern and it's legitimate, but this is not anything to do with this article. So, I have no problem with you discussing that with Mr. Collins of the Board of Selectmen another time or at another appropriate time in this town meeting. But Article 13 just talks about affordable housing, sir, so.
Yeah, I understand, it's what you're doing, is you're taking $300,000. You really don't have a place for it right now, but you do have it there in that fund?
The fund is restricted for the purposes of affordable housing. We're taking $300,000 out of funds that are restricted and can only legally spent on affordable housing, and we're putting them in the hands of a trust that can spend it on affordable housing. There would not be legal use of the funds to do anything, any other activity, including recreational projects, open space projects, or anything other than affordable housing. So, whether this money's there or not doesn't have anything to do with whether there's a remediation for the issue of concern.
But you don't have anything in particular you're putting this money to when you go to this, there's no project right now?
We're putting this money in this fund so the trust has the ability to access funds when an opportunity presents itself in the market, when it would otherwise be impossible to come back to town meeting to get authorization, sufficient time to be able to take advantage of an opportunity in the market that presents itself.
So, you're just taking that money, you don't have anything going for it?
I've answered the question.
Or anything that it's set there for, I just wanna make that straight.
Got one more point if you want, go ahead. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anything else on Article 13? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 13 is moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article 14, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Fund 10% Affordable Housing Reserve in accordance with the provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, the sum of $330,000 for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Housing Assistance Program II, for an additional three-year period, said sum to be allocated as CPA award of $110,000 per year, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, said sum to be dispersed subject to and contingent upon prior execution of a memorandum of understanding between the fund recipient and the Board of Selectmen, the terms of which shall be acceptable to said Board of Selectmen, said funds to be held and expended by the Affordable Housing Trust, the trust, Board of Trustees for the purpose of funding affordable housing, including any necessary costs and expenses related thereto, provided, however, that said sum shall be used exclusively for community housing and shall remain subject to all the rules, regulations, and limitations of Mass General Law, C, Section, C44B, when expended, shall be accounted for separately and provided further that at the end of each fiscal year, it shall, authority shall ensure that all expenditures of said funds are reported to the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion made second. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 14 by a vote of four to two.
Hey, yes, ma'am?
Yes, Jill Allen, 432 Catoot Road. Is this more seed money for the Housing Trust?
No. So, this is, this article slightly, the motion that was made is slightly different than what appeared in your warrant, due to a little bit of confusion about what the Community Preservation Committee voted. What this amended article motion does is it awards $330,000 over three years to the Mashpee Housing Authority for a home assistance program, very similar to what they're currently running based on the prior authorization from town meeting three years ago, with the significant caveat being that before the money's released to them, it will be subject to a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Selectmen and the Housing Authority on the exact nature, terms, and conditions of the program. We have been doing this program, the Housing Authority, using a prior vote, has been doing this program for the last three years, and it takes the form of short-term rental assistance, emergency funding for people that fall on hard times and need assistance with housing and with first month or down payment assistance on a payback basis, run by the Housing Authority. The Board has requested, and this article provides for, a clear set of program operating guidelines so that we can be sure that the money is being expended for its intended use prior to releasing it, and that's what this authorizes.
So, who amended this article before it came to the town meeting today?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Who, how did this article get amended before it came before the meeting today?
The Board of Selectmen had voted to put this article, the way the process works is an applicant applies to the CPC, CPC reviews it, makes a recommendation on including the article in the warrant to the Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen voted in this instance to include the article in the warrant. We had this discussion with the Affordable Housing Authority today where their issues were brought to our attention. We had a Board of Selectmen meeting this evening, prior to town meeting, where we voted on this amended article motion, as drafted by town council, to address the concerns we heard from the Housing Authority and presented it to you tonight.
So, you?
Okay, we're gonna go over here now. Okay? Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Francis Laporte, 42 Forest Drive. I served the town as the state appointee to the Mashpee Housing Authority for the last 14 years, currently serving the last eight years as its chairman. And I think my esteemed colleague, Ms. Allen, is actually getting to the question that I was going to ask, because all the copies that we had of Article 14 are radically different from the article that was just read. Is there a way we can get a copy of the amended article, sir?
That's the copy I have.
Very cute.
It's not cute. You asked me when we spoke today for the article to be reflected, the vote as depicted in the minutes of the CPC committee. After I got off the phone with you this afternoon and I spoke to town council, town council, and we reviewed the minutes and did not have time to go back and review the tapes, so gave the benefit of the doubt to the minutes as they were depicted and changed this article to designate the Mashpee Housing Authority as the fund recipient, subject to the MOU without the buy, without the passing the money through the Affordable Housing Trust. We did exactly what we requested to do by you this afternoon, and that's the article that we put in front of people. We can vote on it, yes, we can vote on it, no, but we're following through with exactly the way it appeared in the CPC committee meeting minutes.
Rather than we're into the stage and accept that piece of paper, sir, I would respectfully request a copy of the article the way it has been rewritten, that's all.
I'm giving you what I have.
All right, well, we have it up here, sir, so I don't know what you want us to do, you can come up and get it if you want.
I shall, thank you.
Okay. All right, we'll go over here.
Kathleen Lynch, 73 Lakewood Drive. I have a quick question on the explanation. It says that we will provide ongoing short-term rental assistance for 12 to 24 months, but a mortgage assistance for short-term one to three months. So, let's say you have a veteran and he can't pay his mortgage, we can only help him for one to three months, but yet we can help a rental. I just don't understand why there's a difference in them, because we would, I would think we'd wanna help them equally, that we would not want anybody to run into mortgage problems that might be a short-term issue on this. That's why I'm asking, that I think it should be equal between mortgage as in rent.
The proposal and the criteria, the way they're presented, is what was requested of us from the Mashpee Housing Authority. So, they propose for certain set of program guidelines, the committee approved them, and that's what's before you today. It's not our, we don't run the program as the town of Mashpee, the Housing Authority does. The point you raised certainly legitimate, and it'd be a conversation to have with the Housing Authority to see if they wanna tweak the guidelines. We are not, act frankly, privy to the conversations that they have on how they come up with what they came up with.
So, quick question, if we did vote on this tonight, would they be able to change their guidelines if we went to them? Or no, because of the way it's been voted on?
I think they would be able to tweak the guidelines so long as the affordable housing, I'm sorry, Mashpee Housing Assistance Program II written materials are reflected, are modified to reflect the changes in the program.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay, he's got the piece of paper, no other discussion? All those in favor of Article 14, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Take a motion to adjourn the special town meeting.
I'll move.
Second. Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Welcome to the annual town meeting. In the name of the Coffin Wealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee who are qualified to vote in the elections to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the 6th day of May, 2019, at 7:00 PM for the following purposes, to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Okay, Article 1, see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers.
Okay, motion made, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 1 by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, discussion on the town reports. Seeing none. All those in favor of town reports, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. All right, this is the omnibus article, I'm gonna read it, and then for those who are familiar with town meeting, you know how it works, I go down line by line. If you have a question, just yell out the word "hold" and I will go back to it at the end. All right, Article 2, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers as provided in Chapter 41, Section 108 of the Massachusetts General Law for the period of July 1, 2019 to June 30, 2020, and further, to see if the town will vote to appropriate raise and/or transfer the sum of money to the fray of town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year, according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated I just don't understand why there's a difference in them, because we would, I would think we'd wanna help them equally, that we would not want anybody to run into mortgage problems that might be a short-term issue on this. That's why I'm asking, that I think it should be equal between mortgage as in rent.
The, um, the proposal and the criteria, the way they're presented, is what was requested of us from the Mashpee Housing Authority. So they propose for a certain set of program guidelines. The committee approved them, and that's what's before you today. It's not our, we don't run the program as the town of Mashpee, the Housing Authority does. The point you raised is certainly legitimate, and it'd be a conversation to have with the Housing Authority, um, to see if they wanna tweak the guidelines. We are not, act frankly, privy to the conversations that they have on how they come up with what they came up with.
So, quick question, if we did vote on this tonight, would they be able to change their guidelines if we went to them? Uh, no, because of the way it's been voted on?
I think they would be able to tweak the guidelines, so long as the Affordable Housing, um, uh, I'm sorry, Mashpee Housing Assistance Program Two, written materials are reflected, are modified to reflect the changes in the program.
Great, thank you very much.
Any other discussion? Okay, he's got the piece of paper. No other discussion? All those in favor of Article fourteen, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Uh, take a motion to adjourn these special town meetings.
I'll move.
Second.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Welcome to the annual town meeting. In the name of the Coffin Wealth of Massachusetts, you are hereby directed to notify and summon the inhabitants of the town of Mashpee, who are qualified to vote in the elections, to meet at the Mashpee High School on Monday, the sixth day of May, two thousand nineteen, at seven P.M. for the following purposes: to act on the articles contained in the following warrant. Okay, Article one, see if the town will vote to accept the reports of the town officers or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara?
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to accept the reports of the town officers.
Okay, motion been made. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article one by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on the town reports. Seeing none. All those in favor of town reports, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? It's unanimous. All right, this is the omnibus article, I'm gonna read it, and then, uh, for those who are familiar with town meeting, you know how it works. I go down line by line. If you have a question, just yell out the word "hold," and I will go back to it at the end. All right. Article two, to see if the town will vote to fix the salaries of the following elected officers, as provided in Chapter forty-one, Section one oh eight of the Massachusetts General Laws, for the period of July one, two thousand nineteen, to June thirtieth, two thousand twenty. And further, to see if the town will vote to appropriate raise and/or transfer the sum of money to defray the town's expenses for the ensuing fiscal year, according to the following line item budget, with the maximum amount to be appropriated, as shown in the column entitled Fiscal Year, two thousand twenty Department Request. See omnibus budget or take any other action related thereto. So I'm gonna read the town manager's recommendations. Again, if somebody has a question, just yell out "hold," and we come back to you, and you can ask the question. All right, uh, first, line one, moderator, salary, two hundred dollars. Uh, total, two hundred dollars. Did I hear a hold? You can have it. All right, selectmen, salary elected, fifteen thousand five hundred. Salary wage, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine. Expense, thirty-eight thousand, five hundred. Legal, engineering, and consulting, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Uh, total, uh, selectmen, eight hundred and seventeen thousand, eight fifty-nine. Finance Committee, reserve fund, one hundred thousand. Expense, sixty-seven thousand. Total, Finance Committee, one hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Town accountant, salary wage, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, two hundred and thirteen. Expense, two thousand seven ninety. Total, two hundred and eighty thousand, three dollars. Assessors, salary appointed, three thousand. Salary wage, two hundred and eighty-four thousand, one seventy-nine. Expense, six thousand eight hundred. Total assessors, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, nine seventy-nine. So I have one hold, which I will come back to on that page. Treasurer tax collector, salary wage, two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine oh three. Is that a hold? Expense, forty-eight thousand, nine hundred. Debt service, two thousand five hundred. Foreclosure, twelve thousand. Total, three hundred and seven thousand, three oh three. Human resources, salary wage, three hundred and thirty thousand, six twenty-one. Expense, ninety-four thousand, eight sixty-nine. Total, forty, four hundred and twenty-five thousand, four ninety. Information technology, salary wage, two, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand, sixty-three. Expense, two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, seventy-seven dollars. Equipment replacement, twenty-seven thousand. Total IT, five hundred and seventy-three thousand, one forty. GIS, salary wage, seventy-six thousand, six forty-five. Expense, ten thousand, five forty. Total G I, GIS, eighty-seven thousand, one eighty-five. Town clerk, salary elected, eighty-five thousand, seven seventy. Salary wage, eighty-nine thousand, six forty-one. Expense, nine thousand, one seventy-five. Total, one hundred and eighty-four thousand, five eighty-six. Elections and registrations, salary wage, fifty-one thousand, seventy-seven. Expense, fifteen thousand, fifty. Total elections and registration, sixty-six thousand, one twenty-seven. I have no holds on that page. Conservation, salary wage, two hundred and nine thousand, nine forty-four. Expense, four thousand, nine thirty. Herring expense, five hundred dollars. Total, two hundred and fifteen thousand, three seventy-four. Natural resources, salary wage, four hundred and nineteen thousand, five oh four. Expense, ninety-nine thousand, five hundred. Propagation, one hundred and sixty-two thousand. Total natural resources, six hundred and eighty-one thousand, four dollars. Planning board, expense, seven thousand, seven sixty-five. Total planning board, seven thousand, seven sixty-five. Planning department, salary wage, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two seventy-five. Expense, four thousand, seven fifty. Planning department total, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, twenty-five. Town hall, expense, two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Total town hall, two hundred and seventy-four thousand. Police, salary wage, three million, nine hundred and fifty-two thousand, four hundred and thirty-eight. Expense, three hundred and seventeen thousand, six eighty-one. Dispatcher salary wage, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-five. Total police, four million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and forty-four. Fire, salary wage, three million, six hundred and seventy-four thousand, nine seventy-nine. Expense, five hundred thousand, two forty-one. Total fire, four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and twenty. Building inspector, salary wage, three hundred and sixteen thousand, seven fifty-two. Expense, sixteen thousand, five ninety-four. Total building inspector, three hundred and thirty-three thousand, three forty-six. I have no holds on that page. Tree warden, expense, four hundred and twenty-five. Total tree warden, four twenty-five. School, budget, twenty-two million, one hundred and seventy-six thousand, nine nineteen. Total school, twenty-two million, one seventy-six, nine nineteen. DPW, salary wage, two million, six ninety-five, six hundred and ninety-five thousand, two hundred and sixty-nine. Hold. I have a hold. Uh, expense, eight hundred and one thousand, one fourteen. Building and grounds, one million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, three twenty-three. Total DPW, four million, seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred, seven oh six. Snow and ice, expense, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy. Total, one hundred and sixteen thousand, five hundred and seventy. Street lighting, expense, twenty-eight thousand. Total, twenty-eight thousand. Transfer station, expense, eight hundred and ninety-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-one. Total, eight hundred, ninety-six thousand, two thirty-one. Sewer commission, expense, seven, uh, ten thousand, two hundred. Total sewer commission, ten thousand, two hundred. Cemetery, expense, fifteen thousand. Total, fifteen thousand. Health, something wrong with health being under cemetery.
Should've been before.
Salary appointed, three thousand dollars. Salary wage, two hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine thirty-four. Tot, uh, expense, twenty-three thousand, five ninety. Total health, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five twenty-four. Counsel on aging, two hundred and forty-four thousand, nine ninety-four. Expense, forty-four thousand, seven oh three. Total counsel on aging, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, six ninety-seven. I have one hold on that page. Veterans, expense, a hundred and five thousand. Membership, forty thousand. Total veterans, one hundred and forty-five thousand. Human serv, human services, salary wage, seventy-six thousand, three forty-three. Expense, fifty-one thousand, nine ten. Total human services, one hundred and twenty-eight thousand, two fifty-three. Library, salary wage, five hundred and one thousand, five sixty. Expense, one hundred and ninety-one thousand, one hundred and five. Total library, six hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and sixty-five. Recreation, salary wage, two hundred and ninety-six thousand, four nineteen. Expense, thirty-two thousand, seventy-five. Total recreation, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand, four ninety-four. Historical, temporary wage, six thousand, eight hundred and thirty. Expense, nine thousand. Total historical, fifteen thousand, eight hundred and thirty. Cultural council, expense, ninety. Total, ninety. Principal inside two and a half, one million, two hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and eighty-five. Principal outside two and a half, eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand, five hundred. Interest inside two and a half, three hundred and twenty-three thousand, six oh two. Interest outside two and a half, four hundred and eleven thousand, eight seventy-five. Temporary borrowing inside two and a half, twenty-five thousand. Temporary borrowing outside two and a half, zero. Retirement expense, three million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand, three hundred and forty-six. Unemployment, sixty thousand. Medical insurance, eight million, sixty-two thousand, five seventy-two. Group insurance, fifteen thousand, three hundred and ten. Medicare, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, three hundred and eighteen. Town insurance, eight hundred and sixty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five. Grand total, fifty-nine million, two hundred and forty-nine thousand, three twenty-seven. All right, so we have two holds, going back to the selectmen. Legal, engineering, consulting, three hundred and eighty-five thousand. Whoever put the hold, or whoever wants to discuss it, please go to the mic. Yes, sir?
Don Myers, nine-half inch flame. Can you tell us how much money is set aside in legal engineering and consulting regarding political lobbying activities? And in particular, the Mashpee Rappidaw Tribe Reservation Reaffirmation Act?
Yeah, can you just repeat that part? We're having trouble hearing. Not you, it's us up here.
Okay, I think I have the question. Uh, relative to the Washington legal counsel, seventy-five thousand approximately. And, uh, as far as the increase is concerned, uh, there's several reasons. One is the issue that I just, uh, pointed out, legal counsel in Washington, relative to pending legislation before Congress. Uh, he's been communicating with me regularly. He spoke to me just before I walked in here. Uh, also, the ZBAs had a couple unanticipated, uh, appeals that have, uh, increased costs, and also, uh, in this upcoming fiscal year, we have collective bargaining. So hence the increase.
Thank you.
Okay, releasing the hold. Okay, uh, that leads us to the next hold, which is on, uh, DPW. Salary wage, two million, six ninety-five, two sixty-nine. Finance Committee.
Uh, yes, the Finance Committee feels as though at this time, this position isn't warranted. Uh, it's been understanding that it's specifically for wastewater. You may and may not know that there was about a two-million-dollar article that was taken off. Uh, we feel at this time that this position probably isn't warranted, and there's also been some chatter that perhaps some of this wastewater may move over to the water department. So we feel at this point in time that this position, uh, should be taken off the budget.
Mr. Moderator?
Uh, Mr. Galloway?
Position in question is the, um, town engineer position, which was actually created by town meeting vote in nineteen eighty-seven. Um, we attempted to fill it at that time, didn't fill it, has been left vacant largely unfunded since then. That position is funded in this current year's budget. It was not filled by decision by the town manager not to fill it. But it's our collective view that the position is an important one for the town. We don't currently have any engineering capabilities on staff. Proposal is to cut, is to split the time of this person between, um, engineering oper, engineering work for Department of Public Works, and if you drive around town, you know the number of projects we're doing. They all require some degree of engineering expertise. We don't have this staff person, we're gonna contract out for it. Um, having somebody onboard in-house available to support the activities of the department, given the amount of projects that we have going on, is an important feature for us. It also would serve as a deputy director in the absence of the director during vacation and the like, which will strengthen our overall management of the department. The other portion of that person's time is intended to be spent supporting the sewer commission. While the Finance Committee rightly points out that we did pull back on a couple of, um, articles around, um, design engineering for a treatment plant, we still have significant obligations uh, in our wastewater management program that require attention, that require professional staff, that require more than a ten-thousand-dollar line item in the sewer commission budget would support. And until and unless the town makes a decision to transfer responsibility over to some other entity, the town owns a wastewater problem, we have an obligation to at least have some professional staff that has some ability to guide the operation of, and the development of the program uh, for the sewer commission and advise the Board of Selectmen appropriately. We encourage town meeting to support the article as presented.
Okay, so what you're saying, what you're hearing is Finance Committee wants to reduce this line item by ninety-one thousand, and the selectmen want you to keep it as it is. So I'm releasing the hold.
You have one, somebody else?
And, I'm sorry. Oh, yes, sir?
Uh, Steve Peters, three Sewell Drive. I, I do also have some concerns. One, I have some major concerns with wastewater treatment plant and the plans that you have put on hold till October, but, you know, there's obviously a lot of concerns with the neighbors that would be surrounding that. I mean, you're talking about putting that in some five neighborhoods, so I would venture to guess that most of the people sitting in here don't even realize how their lives could be affected by having a wastewater treatment plant put right next to their home in a residential zone. Um, I'm also concerned as well with the fact that our selectmen continue to not listen to the Finance Department, as well as the citizens in the town, who are saying, "Listen, we wanna see a plan put together before we just start throwing money at it. Um, we wanna know what you have planned." And you guys just continue to do this. I mean, even when it's not our money, you know, you've still got four hundred and fifty thousand dollars that you received through another fund that you're putting into this wastewater treatment plant design, even though the citizens and, you know, your own Finance Department are coming forward and saying, "Listen, this isn't a good idea. The plan that you put forward has flaws in it. Go back, fix the plan, and then let's talk about funding it. But don't just throw our money away because the selectmen decide that they know what's best. Listen to the citizens here. Listen to your Finance Department."
Yes, sir?
Patrick Flynn, ten Forest Drive. I believe that the lack of a professional engineering in the DPW department is reflected on various projects around the towns over the years. And I agree with the selectmen that funding this position is important to all of us in order to better utilize the funds that we entrust the DPW and to better serve the town. Thank you.
Ms. Sherman?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to fix the salaries of the elected officers as specified under the columns entitled Town Manager's Recommendation, in line items two and twenty-four of the omnibus budget, and as disputed to voters at the town meeting, and further the town to fray the expenses for the ensuing fiscal year by appropriation. These amounts shown under columns entitled Town Manager's Recommendation, and that to fund said appropriation, the town raise and appropriate fifty-five million, seven hundred and eighty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six, and further appropriate transfer from the ambulance receipts reserved and appropriation account, four hundred and fifty thousand, to line item forty-two. Fifty thousand to line item forty-three. A hundred and thirty thousand to line item seventy-two, and thirty-two thousand, five hundred to line item seventy-four. Appropriate and transfer from the holiday, hi, from hotel and motel receipts account, seventy-five thousand, to line item eighty. Appropriate and transfer from the conservation revolving account, fifteen thousand dollars, to line item twenty-nine. Appropriate and transfer from the shelf fish receipts reserved in appropriation account, twenty-five thousand, to line item thirty-four. Appropriate and transfer from the waterways improvement fund, twenty-five thousand, to line item thirty-three. Appropriate and transfer from the cemetery receipts reserved for appropriation account, fifteen thousand dollars, to line item fifty-five. Appropriate and transfer from the street bediment receipts, reserved for appropriation account, four hundred thousand, to line item seventy-two. A hundred and thirty-eight thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five, to line item seventy-four, and twenty-five thousand, to line item seventy-six. Appropriate and transfer from the septic bediment receipts, reserved for appropriation account, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and ninety-six, to line item seventy-two. Eleven thousand, eight hundred and sixty, to line item fifty-seven, and appropriate and transfer from the Community Preservation Act Fund, four hundred and fifty thousand, to line item seventy-two, and to forty-four thousand, three hundred, to line item seventy-four, and appropriate and transfer from revenue available for appropriation, one million, five hundred and fifty thousand, to line item eighty.
Second.
Right, motion made and seconded. Right, motion made in second.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to make an amendment to Article Two, which reads that we'd like to amend the total budget of fifty-nine million, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-twenty-seven.
So for everybody out there, they're making a motion to amend the total budget down to ninety-one thousand because of line number forty-eight.
Mr. Moderator.
So there's motion and second. Discussion on the amendment.
Moderator.
Mr. Gottlieb.
I'd ask the town meeting to vote no on the amendment in response to the comments that were made. The recommend, the budget amount that you have before you that's being asked to be reduced actually does reflect the recommendation of the town manager and his finance team. So they looked at it, spent months looking at this, and decided that the recommended amount, including the position of funding the assistant town engineer for the town engineer's position, was the appropriate and cost-effective way for the town to get the services that it needs. So I'd recommend that the town meeting reject the finance committee article and vote no on this amendment.
Yes, sir.
Good evening. As Chris had said earlier, as we were approaching this amendment to reflect the decrease of ninety-one thousand dollars, it's not that we don't think it's going to be needed in the future, okay? We just don't think it's appropriate at this time. As we get closer to engineering and looking at things where real money is going to be spent, where we have a position that's, we were told that was going to be about seventy-five percent wastewater, that's not the case at this moment. So this can be brought back in October, even next year, to bring it back up. And maybe then we'll have an idea of where this is going. You know, part of our job as a finance committee is to recommend to the town, after we've dived into these numbers, we've spent months looking at these numbers, just trying to find simple things. This is one area that we could cut, save a little money for now, and maybe come back to it later, and I'd ask you to approve the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, I think, and I'll do it. My understanding from the finance committee, their money that they're requesting it be reduced would come from the raise in appropriate amount of fifty-five million, seven-eighty-two, seven-hundred-and-forty-six, subtracting that ninety-one thousand from that sum. Okay, that's the amendment. So... Mr. Moderator. Mr. Collins.
I just want to make it crystal clear that the amendment, which obviously reduces it by the ninety-one thousand figure, I want you to realize that that number is currently in the approved budget for the last fiscal year. I acknowledge fully that the position was not filled, but I don't want you to think we're creating a new position, as selectman Gottlieb previously pointed out. You created this position a long time ago. It was funded, and if I'm not mistaken, for the last two years. So you might question, "Well, why haven't you filled it?" It's not as simple as filling a position because it's there. We consult with staff, and based on the professional analysis of your needs, we want to make sure you're getting your bang for your buck in terms of your tax dollar. And based on the pressing need of some engineering issues, specifically concerning wastewater and other things, we felt that the need was rising to the top, where we wanted to continue to fund it. It's a continuation of funding, not new funding.
Okay, so what you're going to be voting on is whether or not the amendment will stand, not, you're not voting on the total budget, just whether to amend it, okay? So all those in favor of amm, to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
It's got to be majority. Try it one more time. All those in favor of amending, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Defeated. I can hear. All right, so we're back to the original motion and second, which is the budget, as you see, under the town manager recommendation. In other words, the ninety-one thousand's back in. Discussion on the budget overall. Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of Article Two as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Passes. Article Three, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, six-hundred-and-ninety-two, from available funds to various department capital accounts, as specified in the charter accompanying this article, or take any other action related there too. Same thing. This is capital improvements. I'll read it. If you want to hold, just yell it out. DPW, two thousand and eighteen, CAT nine-three-eight M loader, year two of three, seventy-six-thousand, nine-fifty. Ford F-350, forty-five thousand. Ford F-350, forty-five thousand. Ford F-350, forty-five thousand. Replace moderator's cart, no, I'm sorry. Making sure you're listening. Replace F-350 with Ford F-550, year one of two, forty thousand. Total DPW, two fifty-one, nine fifty. Fire ambulance, three hundred and ten thousand. Total fire, three hundred and ten thousand. IT, laser fitch, sixty thousand. I'm a dinosaur. Time and attendance payroll system, one hundred thousand. Total IT, one hundred and sixty thousand. Planning and construction, flooring replacement, fifty thousand. MMHS irrigation wellhead, pump replacement, twenty-five thousand. Athletic facilities, master plan for the Mashpee Middle High School, thirty thousand. Needs analysis for Department of Natural Resources building, thirty thousand. Total planning and construction, one hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Moderator.
Police. Ten police vehicles, year three of three, one hundred and forty-four thousand. Four police vehicles, year two of three, fifty-two thousand. Total police, one hundred and ninety-six thousand. Recreation, ADA compliant ban, year two of three, seventeen thousand, seven forty-two. Total recreation, seventeen thousand, seven forty-two. School, security system, one hundred and ten thousand. MMHS auditorium sound system, twenty-five thousand. MMHS auditorium light, lighting system, a hundred thousand. Chromebook computers, thirty-six thousand. Replace teachers' PCs, fifty-six thousand. Interactive boards, twenty-five thousand. Wireless overhaul, twenty-five thousand. Kitchen upgrades, twenty-five thousand. Total school, four hundred and two thousand. Total capital appropriation, one million, four-hundred-and-seventy-two-thousand, six-ninety-two. I didn't hear any holds, but if you want, let me know. Okay, Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of fifty thousand from the PEG Access and Cable Related Fund, the sum of seventeen thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-two dollars from the Recreation Revolving Fund, the sum of twenty-five thousand dollars from the School Lunch Revolving Fund, and the sum of one million, three-hundred-and-seventy-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-fifty dollars from revenue available for appropriation to fund the various department capital accounts.
Second. Motion been made in second. At Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Three by a vote of four to one.
Any discussion on Article Three? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Three, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It passes. Article Four. See if the town will vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of fifteen million, eighty-seven thousand, and further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of one million, thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven, to meet its share of the cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Gott, Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to approve the annual regional school district budget for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of fifteen million, eighty-seven thousand, and further, to see that the town will vote to raise the appropriate, the sum of one million, thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, to meet its share of cost of operation and maintenance of the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion been made in second. At Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Four by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article Four. Seeing none. All those favor Article Four, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes. Article Five, see if the town will vote to approve the regional school district debt assessment for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of seven million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four. And further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, to meet its share of the cost of debt for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, or take any other action related there too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thanks, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the region, regional school district debt assessment for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building. Project for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, in the amount of seven million, seven-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand, three-hundred-and-sixty-four. And further, to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of six-hundred-and-eleven-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars, to meet its share of the cost of debt for the Cape Cod Regional Technical High School District Building Project for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Motion been made in second. At Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Five by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article Five. Yes, sir.
Tyler Maciel, fifty-eight, Settleback. Just my concern about it is just, okay, it's the one million before you, basically the one million or whatever was before to approve for the regional budget. I get that. But then the six-hundred-thousand dollars for the debt after, for the Cape Cod Tech Regional Building, am I, am I right on that? So, okay, so, six-hundred-thousand, eleven-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty dollars. It seems like you're just adding more kind of money to it when, I don't know, I just think that the amount of money contributing towards the debt is a bit too much. Just, that was my concern.
Any other questions? Or discussion? All right, seeing none. All those in favor of Article Five as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Six, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund, or take any other action related there too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from the revenue available for appropriation to the other post-employment benefits irrevocable trust fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion been made in second. At Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Six by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Six? Seeing none. All those favor of Article Six as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Seven, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into the capital stabilization fund, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cahill.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of one million, three-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, six-hundred-and-eighty dollars from the revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into the capital stabilization fund.
Second. Motion been made in second. At Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seven by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article Seven. Seeing none. All those in favor of Article Seven as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Eight, see if the town will vote to accept Section 3A of Chapter 337 of the Acts of two thousand and eighteen, Section 3A of General Law, Chapter sixty-four G, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax upon the transfer of occupancy of a room in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, or motel, at the rate of six percent of the total amount of rent paid for each such occupancy, or take any other action related there too, or relative there too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, move the town vote to accept Section 3A of Chapter 337 of the Acts of two thousand and eighteen, Section 3A of General Law, Chapter sixty-four G, authorizing the imposition of a local excise tax upon the transfer of occupancy of a room in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, or motel, at the rate of six percent of the total amount of rent paid for each such occupancy.
Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been made in second. At Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommended approval of Article Eight by a vote of three to two.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hood. My family has owned property on Monamoskoy Island since nineteen fifty-five. I would like to speak about this article, please.
Say the question again, I'm sorry.
My name is Nancy Hood. My family has owned property on two-twenty-two Monamoskoy Road since nineteen fifty-five. I would like to speak on this issue. I am not a resident. I live in Bristol, Rhode Island. I have a summer cottage on two-twenty-two Monamoskoy Island, and I would be adversely affected by this.
All right, hold on. You're not, you're not a town voter?
No.
Okay, so, hold on. All in favor of allowing this lady to speak, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Go ahead, ma'am.
Thank you. I'm asking that, that there may a distinction, a distinction between motels, bed and breakfasts, and short-term rental properties. And let me explain a little bit about what my situation is, if you will, and how this would adversely affect my family. We, my husband, daughter, and I own family property on Monamoskoy Island. The land was purchased by my parents in the mid-nineteen fifties and passed down as a legacy. They bought three twenty-five lots for, twenty-five-foot lots, for five-hundred dollars each at that time. At first, we camped on the land. Dad built a wooden boat, and eventually a one-room cabin. I made friends with other children whose parents put up modest summer cottages. As a city kid, we delighted in being able to roam free and discover nature's treasures. And even now, you'll find on Monamoskoy many older folks like me who became attached to Monamoskoy when we were kids. We now have a small, three-room cottage that is not winterized, and that my husband and I built with our own hands in the early eighties. We feel grateful to my parents that we have this special place that is near and dear to our hearts. However, we are highly taxed in this town where we do not use the services because we live in Bristol, Rhode Island. Over the years, Mashpee property taxes have risen to the point where we are paying the same amount on a three-room summer cottage that we pay on our year-round house in Bristol, Rhode Island. We are far from wealthy. My daughter teaches public college, and my husband and I are semi-retired. Therefore, we have to rent out our cottage on a weekly basis for part of the summer in order to make ends meet. We don't charge exorbitant rates and fees. We don't have a dishwasher. We don't have any kind of profit that we pocket. We collect exactly enough summer rent each year in order to pay our annual property taxes and utilities and keep the property in our family. We have excellent relationships with our full-time resident neighbors and are part of a community, and we've been part of the community for three generations. I hope to be able to pass this property on to my grandchildren. However, if you pass this Mashpee tax and the health requirement, in addition to the burden of the new Massachusetts and Cape short-term rental taxes and insurance requirements, I'm afraid that we will not be able to keep our sweet place... I'm afraid that we will not be able to keep our sweet place, and we will have to sell And who will buy this? Wealthy Massachusetts residents, out-of-staters, developers who can afford to build an oversized home and only occupy it part-time? I hope that you'll take into account the negative impact the law will have on communities and families like mine. We have not purchased this property as an investment. We are using it short-term rentals assiduously to keep family homes in our family. Please reconsider this law and take out the clause that refers to my kind of situation that is short-term rental in order to hang on to a property in our family. Thank you.
Okay.
Our town council will answer her question.
Go ahead.
Good evening.
Hi.
This is merely a local option acceptance vote that's proceeding here tonight. The general laws of the Commonwealth have already been established.
I know that.
All right, so all we're asking, town meeting tonight, is whether it chooses to accept the 6% excise tax on these various platforms of rental properties.
I understand that, and that would mean 12.44% tax that we would have to come up with, and I don't know how we would do that.
It's, again, it's a local option, the rules of the ground rules have been laid out by the general.
I know, that's what I'm speaking to. I know we can't do anything about Massachusetts or the others.
Mr. Moderator. Yes, sir.
My name is Tim Martin, and I live at 7 Russell Road, happens also to be on Monomoskoy Island. I would like to propose an amendment. Can I do that? And we vote on it?
Close the amendment. Go ahead.
My, I am concerned that there's no stipulation is taught to the use of this excise tax would be, and I think we have a real opportunity here to recognize that there's a real coupling between short-term occupancy rentals, people, and increased sewage load. So I'd like to ask that this excise tax be specifically targeted and limited to wastewater treatment.
Mr. Mr. Moderator?
Yep.
Could I suggest that if you look forward to Article Nine, the one after this, it provides for the direction of the receipts in whatever amount is voted in Article Eight to capital improvement purposes inclusive of wastewater. So it suggests, I like where you're going with this, you're one article too early.
So this fully limits the use of funds, the receipts from the excise tax?
Not to get ahead of ourselves, but Article Nine specifies the percentage and uses of money for this purpose.
Okay. We don't allow do-overs. All right, anybody else? All right, seeing no one else. Article Eight as moved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Article Nine, see if the town will vote to accept Paragraph Four of Chapter Forty, Section 5B of the General Laws, and dedicate without further appropriation into a special purpose capital expenditure stabilization fund created hereby for the purposes of implementation of the town's wastewater management program, affordable housing, and transportation improvements. Seventy-five percent of the local option room excise tax that the town receives on the transfer of occupancy of a room in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, or motel pursuant to its acceptance of the General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, as amended by Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, provided that said dedication shall take effect beginning in fiscal year 2020, which begins on July 1, 2019, and provided further that the town shall not revoke its acceptance of said dedication for at least three fiscal years, or take any other action related there too. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept Paragraph Four of Chapter Forty, Section 5B of the General Laws, and dedicate without further appropriation into a special purpose capital expenditure stabilization fund created hereby for the purposes of implementation of the town's wastewater management program, affordable housing, and transportation improvements, seventy-five percent of all of the local option rooms excise tax the town receives on the transfer of occupancy of a room in a bed and breakfast establishment, hotel, lodging house, short-term rental, and motel pursuant to its acceptance of General Law, Chapter 64G, Section 3A, as amended by Chapter 337 of the Acts of 2018, provided that said dedication shall take effect beginning in the fiscal year 2020, which begins on July 1, 2019, and provided further that the town shall not revoke its acceptance of said dedication for at least three fiscal years.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article Nine by a vote of four to one.
Okay, yes, sir.
This is Tim Martin again. Can you explain why, what's the wisdom of the 75 and 25%? What's going on there? Why not 100%?
Mr. Collins, you want to take that one?
Actually, I'll take that.
Mr. Cotton.
To tell you the truth, it was by preference, I would prefer it to be 100%, but I was willing to accept the negotiated 75% percentage.
Mr. Moderator, do you have any estimates of the actual?
Mr. Gottlieb.
Part of the reason is that a certain amount, we have an existing hotel tax that supports some of the ongoing activities within the town budget. And this budget that you previously approved was built upon the assumption that that revenue stream would continue. With the new expanded hotel-motel tax that the legislature approved in December of last year, provides an opportunity, expanded the base of transactions that will be taxed. And we thought, in discussions, and we had a hearty discussion among the five of us, what the right number was, we thought that the 75% would allow for the continued maintenance of the expected revenue that's going into the general operating side while providing us a one-time opportunity to take new revenue, set it aside for capital infrastructure purposes that are necessary and that would otherwise go on your property tax. And so this is a way that we determined as a board to provide some property tax relief and have some of the transient accommodation people paying a fair portion of the costs associated with their activities in town. Is there magic to 75% versus 85% versus nine? No, but it's what we could come up with in terms of balancing the issues that we had before us.
Okay, just one other relevant question, I think. I have wondered all along here, we've several times in these articles transferred from something called available funds, you know, to different purposes. Can someone explain what, where are these available funds coming from? And it sounds like it's a pretty big pot. What's wrong with, I mean, it can't take care of this 25%?
Okay, Mr. Collins?
I'm going to defer to the Finance Director if I need to, but I mean specifically, it's free cash, certified free cash, and available funds through the operating budget.
And what is thought to be the size of this fund now?
She can... The size of the fund.
Well, we did have approximately nine million, but it's not there now.
Come on up.
Like what fraction of the available funds are being used in these articles now?
I'm going to hear from the town.
Just so we understand the available funds a little better.
Revenue available for appropriation is what?
In the mic.
I'm sorry. State who you are first. Sorry, I'm short. The revenue available for appropriation is what some people refer to as free cash, you'll hear that, that's a statewide term. It is what the funds, or it is the funds that are available for the town to expend on any legal purpose through a town meeting vote. It's not restricted, it's not a special fund, it's not restricted to anything in particular. You can use it and vote to use it at town meeting for any legal purpose. Our FY 2019 certified free cash was $9 million. That amount stems from prior year's balance plus any receipts, actual receipts over our estimates, any department turnbacks, and, trying to think what else, anything that is not expended, basically. And we use that to fund special articles, we use some of it to offset our budget, and we use a good portion to put away in our stabilization fund, capital stabilization fund, and our OPEB, our unfunded liabilities. It's important, the bond rating agencies, this is a really big deal when it comes to giving us our bond rating. If you do not expend your free cash and you have a healthy amount of free cash available, they look at that as we are prepared for an emergency or any type of big expenditure that might come our way without having to have an emergency bond or anything like that. So that's basically what, when you hear revenue available for appropriation, that's what we're referring to.
I can skip my accounting class. Ms. Lynch.
Kathy Lynch, I just have a quick question on this article. So in this article, we want to put 75% into stabilization, but then in Article 20, we're looking at hiring a new person that's going to be almost $100,000 a year. But then in the, before town meeting, special town meeting, we put $300,000 to help people that are having problems with their rent or mortgage, but yet, we're going to increase rental, the cost of renting here in Mashpee. So my question is, how much are you anticipating getting if we're going to put 75% away, but yet, we're going to have $100,000 to pay, almost $100,000 to pay a new employee?
The, Mr. Moderator, if I might?
Yep.
The rental tax that we're discussing now applies only to rentals of 30 days or less. So it's short-term rental. So the example you present of people that are having trouble with me in the year-round rent, this tax does not apply to year-round leases or any rental agreement in excess of 30 days.
Okay.
So you're talking about largely vacation rentals.
Okay.
The expectation is that the, again, jumping ahead, the discussion later on about position for inspections in the Board of Health is anticipated to be funded out of the portion that doesn't go to the set-aside, the 25% that's remaining is going into the general fund. So we're looking at this, the collections from this tax, paying the cost of the person who's going to be needed to enforce Board of Health rules should that article pass. So again, it doesn't go on the property tax base, and it's not something that comes out of your property taxes, it's paid for by the rental income. And in terms of how much do we expect, we don't really know, because a lot of the home rental activity is an underground activity, the town doesn't, up till now, register it or regulate it any meaningful way, and so it's hard to know. And that's why the legislature, when they set this provision up, rather than specify to a particular dollar figure, it's 75% of the amount that comes in. And so it's flexible based on what the receipts are, as is certified by the state, as we get them every month.
Right, thank you.
All right, we'll go over here and then over there. Go ahead, sir.
Don Myers, you partially answered the question that I was going to ask in regard to how much funds you anticipate to raise from this tax, but you're confident enough that you're going to raise enough to be able to pay for at least one position?
Yes.
But you don't know how much you're going to raise?
Well, we already, with the existing tax, the way it was worded prior to the change this year, we were collecting over $100,000, roughly $100,000 on a 4% tax. Tonight, town meeting previously voted to expand the 4% to 6%, and the base of transactions by the Legislature's Act to go from just hotel-motel to include home rentals, expanded the base so significantly that there's, I have, there's no question in, I think, in anybody's mind that will far exceed the $100,000 collections that we've had in prior years.
But no estimate has been done, and...
It's hard to know. Nothing I would bank on.
And no funds have been anticipated in the budget, omnibus budget that we passed?
Only the $100,000 that we have had from prior years, based on prior year collections. The state would not allow any town to include any of the revenue from this new rental tax in its fiscal '20 budget because there's no track record on collections. So statewide, no town is being allowed to unless they get special permission from the State Department of Revenue to include any of the projected income beyond what they'd include, what they'd receive in prior years under the terms of the existing prior hotel-motel tax in their upcoming year budget.
And based on our financial condition, we did not ask for that, correct?
I'm sorry, I didn't catch what he said.
I can't hear you.
We did not ask for that, no.
Okay, thank you.
Sir?
Brian Everett, Forest Drive. I just have a clarifying question. The $4 million in CPA funds, is that included in the free cash, the $9 million free cash, or is that two separate numbers?
Yeah, that's under a separate 3% surtax on property taxes under state law that goes to CPA purposes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Irene Chakovich, Sunset Strip. I would love to hear from the Finance Committee as to why you do not recommend this.
We're all wondering, Mike. You know, that was our problem, we...
Yeah, it was part about the buckets and where...
Right, it was about the buckets and where the money was going to go, and it was almost unclear, like, exactly where they wanted to put things. And the 75% to us, well, it's up to 75%, and it could go into any of these things that they mentioned here, but it really doesn't dictate where it goes. And you're right, they're going to take the money from that and pay for another position to be the rental czar in Mashpee, to go around collecting and making sure people are following the law that they're supposed to be doing things. So people will be knocking on your door, seeing if you're renting or not. And it's kind of, we had an issue with it, and so we decided that we wouldn't agree to it.
What I'd just like to say is that if you look at the explanation in the article in the article, it's a stabilization fund for clean water projects, transportation improvements, and affordable housing. And it directs 75% into those funds. We didn't have a very clear understanding as to what clean water projects actually meant, what transportation improvements meant, and what affordable housing. I mean, they're very general terms, and we're talking about an additional tax on top of, you know, a person who's paying taxes, you know, who has a short-term rental. So it was just the ambiguity, we could never get clarification.
Mr. Moderator.
Scotty.
The tax is happening now, whether or not the money gets segregated into this reserve fund. And all this reserve fund allows the town to do is build up a reserve for capital projects. We all know we've got road projects, we all know we've got clean water projects, whether they're drinking water projects or restoration of, for wastewater purposes, and we know we have affordable housing needs that exceed our ability to fund based on anything that comes out of our property tax. This allows the town meeting to vote subsequently to take, the only way the money comes out is if you vote two-thirds to take it out. So a specific project in the future is going to come before you, that's going to ask, that's going to fall within one of the three broad categories that's provided here, and town meeting will have to vote two-thirds, it's a very high bar, to take that money out for the intended purpose. Once it's put in under the provisions of the state law that governs this, you can't just take the money out and spend it on personnel or positions. It's a capital reserve fund only for the purposes for which it's specified in this article. And so basically, it allows you to set up a savings account for replacing your roof when the roof needs to get replaced. If you've got a windfall, which is largely what this is, it provides the ability to segregate that money automatically, and then you, as town meeting, control the disbursement for eligible projects. Our fear is if this doesn't go in, what's going to happen is it will go into that revenue available for appropriation... available for appropriation account that we just discussed. It's uncommitted money, it's not budgeted, and all of a sudden, it will expand the base that people think that we have available for spending for general operating functions, which is a poor way to use non-property tax revenue that doesn't burden you, the voters, and for purposes that are important to the long-term sustainability of the community. And we're afraid that if we wait for a lot of these questions again, well, how much are you collecting, what's going to go to this, what's going to go to that, it's all going to get sucked into the general operating budget, and it's going to disappear. And you'll have nothing to show for an opportunity to set aside new revenue for long-known purposes that we all have to deal with, and that we already know we don't have the sufficient funds on the property tax base to comfortably pay for.
Would it be possible to amend it, to only dedicate it to wastewater management as the prior gentleman had suggested? I don't, I'm not quite sure why affordable housing is in there, since there's already ten percent of the CPC funds that are dedicated to affordable housing as it is.
So the answer is yes, you can amend if you want.
Yeah, let's be real clear and make it easy, the use of these funds for something that's, we can all, you know, that, well, I don't know if we can all agree, but let's be real clear and just clarify it right now, what it's going to be used for. And I propose that we amend this to say that, that the excise tax one hundred percent would be targeted, I don't know how someone, lawyer, will have to explain, you know, how to, you know, how to say this properly, but to be real clear that it's used for wastewater only, and of course, that's a muddy term, too, but, you know, but, you know, something of that, can we amend it to say that it's specifically for wastewater treatment only?
That's your proposed amendment?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
What's the change?
So I have an amendment, we'll discuss that in a minute. Town Council wants to just address something.
I, I think the amendment is within, or it's within the scope of the article. Wastewater and other specified uses within this capital stabilization fund are set forth in the order, would be appropriate to amend them. But I think, as Selectman Gottlieb previously noted, there is a presumption in the town's operating budget, which has been approved this year, that some of these funds will be utilized to fund the budget. That's why they left the twenty-five percent undedicated to this particular stabilization fund. So I'm, I'd have to ask the town accountant in more detail, but dedicating a hundred percent of these excise tax revenues to the stabilization account could cause a hiccup with regard to the budget that's already been approved. I just caution the meeting on that point.
Approximately a hundred thousand.
Excuse me, Mr. Moderator. Just to clarify, are they referring to a hundred percent, or are they referring to a hundred percent of the seventy-five percent in this article?
A hundred percent. So with your amendment, which we'll discuss, it will cause a problem potentially with the budget. Seeing that, discussions on the amendment.
Uh, Jerry?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, sorry. I just, just to want to clarify about the twenty-five percent as well, as far as, you know, where other monies would go to. And one of the things we have discussed as a Finance Committee that we, we run into is a lot of those monies would go back into the budget, particularly into salaries. Fifty-three percent of this budget is salaries for our town employees, fifty-three percent. So as we continue to grow and that need increases, something's going to have to give, either taxes are going to have to give, or services are going to have to give. By putting that twenty-five percent in there, at least you have something to go back toward services and so forth into town.
Okay, I'm going to take a vote. The vote would be to amend, to amend the seventy-five to one hundred percent. All those in favor of amending-
Only to wastewater.
Yeah, to wastewater, sorry. All those in favor, to amend, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Okay, it's defeated. Any further discussion on Article Nine? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nine, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Nine as moved previously and seconded, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
I declare two-thirds. Article Ten, see if the town will vote to raise or transfer from available funds and appropriate the sum of fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of funding the Mashpee Library Project, preserving our past, designation of the Mashpee Enterprise Newspaper, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation for the purposes of funding the Mashpee Library Project, preserving our past, designation of the Mashpee Enterprise Newspaper. Thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Ten by a vote of three to one with one abstention.
Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Ten as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article Eleven, see if the town will vote to adopt by local option pursuant to general laws, Chapter sixty-four N., Section Three, the additional three percent local sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to adopt by local option pursuant to general laws, Section, Chapter sixty-four N., Section Three, the additional three percent local sales tax on the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana retailer operating within the town.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eleven by a vote of five to zero.
Any discussion on Article Eleven? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Eleven as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It's approved. Article Twelve, bear with me on this word, see if the town will vote to transfer from available funds a sum of fifty thousand dollars to be expanded under the direction of the Mashpee One Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Committee with approval by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of funding the town a Mashpee sesquicentennial celebration in two thousand and twenty, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahalan, good luck.
Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of fifty thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be expended under the direction of the Mashpee One Hundred and Fiftieth Anniversary Committee with approval by the Board of Selectmen for the purpose of funding the town Mashpee sesquicentennial celebration in two thousand and twenty.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee, have to say that word first.
The Finance Committee congratulates you both. The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Twelve by a vote of five to zero.
Discussions on Article Twelve, whoever discusses it has to say the word. Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of Article Twelve as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article Thirty-seven, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article Thirteen as presented in the warrant with the exception of the phrase, "or take any other action related there, too."
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Thirteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Thirteen? See, seeing none, all those in favor of Article Thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Fourteen, see if the town will vote to authorize the total expenditures for the following revolving funds pursuant to general laws, Chapter forty-four, Section Fifty-three E., one-half, for the fiscal year beginning July one, two thousand and nineteen, to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds. It afore approved, or take any other action related there, too. Recreation, five hundred and eighty thousand, library, twenty thousand, senior center is fifteen thousand, and a historical commission is twenty-five hundred. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved that the town vote to authorize the total expenditures for their respective revolving funds identified in the chart set forth in Article Fourteen at the limits noted therein pursuant to general law, Chapter forty-four, Section Fifty-three E., one and one-half, for the fiscal year beginning July first, two thousand and nineteen, said sums to be expended in accordance with the bylaw establishing said revolving funds.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fourteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Fourteen? Seeing none, all those favor Article Fourteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Fifteen, see if the town will vote to appropriate four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, ninety-eight dollars to establish a budget for the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, with said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of four hundred and ninety-eight thousand, ninety-eight dollars to establish a budget for the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund for fiscal year two thousand and twenty, with said appropriation to be funded through the current balance of the fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Fifteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Fifteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Fifteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Sixteen, see if the town will vote to accept the last paragraph of general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F., to authorize the town to create a special fund to be known as a special injury leave indemnity fund, to be expanded by the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation for payment of injury, leave compensation, or medical bills incurred under general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F., or one hundred, to which appropriations may be made and amounts received from insurance proceeds or restitution for injuries to firefighters or police officers shall be credited, provided further that said board may, if the amounts therein are not immediately necessary or required in the foreseeable future, release specific amounts to the general fund, or take any other action related there, too. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to accept the last paragraph of general law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-one-one F., to authorize the town to create a special fund to be known as a special injury leave indemnity fund, to be expended by the Board of Selectmen without further appropriation or payment of injury leave compensation or medical bills incurred under general law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-one-one F., or one hundred, to which appropriations may be made and amounts received from insurance proceeds, restitution for injuries to firefighters or police officers, shall be credited, provided further that the said board may, if the amounts therein are not immediately necessary or required in the foreseeable future, release specific amounts to the general fund.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Sixteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Sixteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Sixteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Seventeen, see if the town will vote to establish a special injury leave indemnity fund, injured-on-duty fund, in accordance with the provisions of general laws, Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F., for the purpose of funding injury leave compensation or medical bills incurred under said law, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to be deposited into said fund, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move- Mr. Moderator, I move to vote to establish a special injury leave indemnity fund, injured-on-duty fund, in accordance with the provisions of general law, Chapter forty-one, Section one-eleven F., for the purpose of funding injury leave compensation or medical bills incurred under said law, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of three hundred thousand dollars from revenue available for appropriation to the, to be deposited into the said fund.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Seventeen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Seventeen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Seventeen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article Eighteen, see if the town will vote to raise, borrow, or transfer from available funds and appropriate, and appropriate five hundred, five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven, to provide for road improvement projects under the Chapter Ninety program, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the sum of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars to provide for road improvement projects in and for the town in accordance with the provisions of Chapter Ninety, the Massachusetts General Laws, and to authorize the treasurer with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to borrow said sum of five hundred and ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and seventy-seven dollars under and pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Laws, Chapter forty-four, Section seven and eight, or any other enabling authority, and to issue bonds and notes of the town thereof.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Eighteen by a vote of six to zero.
Any discussion on Article Eighteen? Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article Eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Article Nineteen, see if the town will vote to upgrade one part-time waterways assistant position, thirty hours per week, with benefits to a full-time waterways assistant position within the Department of Natural Resources, with said position to be classified under the Personnel Administration Plan, Appendix B., to be effective July one, two thousand and nineteen, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents from revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows, eleven thousand, one hundred and seven to the Department of Natural Resources Full-Time Salary Account, and one hundred and sixty-one dollars and five cents to the Medicare Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to upgrade one part-time waterways assistant position, thirty hours a week, with benefits to a full-time waterways assistant position with the Department of Natural Resources, with said position to be classified under the Personnel Administration Plan, Appendix B., to be effective July first, two thousand and nineteen, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-eight dollars and five cents from revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows, eleven thousand, one hundred and seven dollars to the Department of Natural Resources Full-Time Salary Account, and a hundred and sixty-one dollars and five cents to the Medicare Account.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article Nineteen by a vote of five to one.
Any discussion on Article Nineteen? Seeing none, all those in favor of Article Nineteen as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
It passes. Article Twenty, see if the town will vote to create an additional position for full-time forty hours per week, assistant health agent within the health department, with said position to be classified under Unit A. of the Managers, Laborers, International Union of North America, to be effective July one, two thousand and nineteen, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars from revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows, fifty-seven thousand, seven oh five, to the health department salary wage account, twenty-five thousand, two seventy-two, to the Medicare insurance account, thirty-five dollars to the group life insurance account, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollars to the Medicare expense account, and twelve thousand, four ninety-two, to the Barnstable County Retirement Expense Account, or take any other action related there, too. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to create an additional position of full-time, forty hours per week, assistant health agent within the health department, with said position to be classified under Unit A. of the Managers, Laborers, International Union of North America, to be effective July one, two thousand and nineteen, and to appropriate and transfer the sum of ninety-six thousand, three hundred and forty-one dollars from revenue available for appropriation, with said funds to be distributed as follows, fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and five dollars to the health department salary wage and account, twenty-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-two dollars to the Medicare Medical Insurance Account, thirty-five dollars to the group life insurance account, eight- $35 to the Group Life Insurance Account, $837 to the Medicare Expense Account, and $12,492 to the Barnstable County Retirement Expense Account.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article 20 by a vote of five to zero.
Ms. Lynch.
How much is the... How much are you going to charge for them to get the... to register?
Oh, for the rental?
Yeah.
It's up to the board.
I think that's up to the Board of Health.
No, it's up to us.
Oh, it's up to us, okay. We haven't...
What's the question?
It hasn't been determined yet.
So, we haven't determined how much we could potentially bring in, we haven't determined what we're going to charge for the certificate, but we're going to spend almost $100,000 getting a...
We do have an estimate of how much we're bringing in. In our hotel motel tax, we're already bringing in $100,000.
So...
So, that's where that's coming out of.
All right, Mr. Collins.
I understand the question, and the simple answer is, we're not going to fill any position until we have a good understanding of exactly the terms and conditions. In other words, you've heard tonight that we're not sure about the revenue that it's going to be generating. Obviously, we want to offset the cost associated with this position. This authorizes us to fill the position. You're creating a position by voting this way, and it's going to end up just like the engineer if we're not offsetting cost.
So, did we fund the position tonight, too, in the budget?
Yes. However, good question. As Town Council has reminded me in the past, I am not obligated to fill any position, even though you've authorized it and appropriated it until the appropriate time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
It's confusing.
No other discussion on Article 20? All those in favor of Article 20 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay. One more time. All those in favor of Article 20 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, let's do a quick hand count. All... You have little cards. All those in favor, raise your cards.
All in favor?
All in favor, raise your cards.
Yeah.
Am I missing anybody else? Debbie. Four counters?
No.
You have four counters? Okay. All right, all those opposed, raise your cards, please. All right, Article 21, to see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Great River/Little River/Channel Expansion Account for the purpose of providing engineering, surveying, and testing services for the expansion project, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $25,000 from the Waterways Improvement Fund to the Great River/Little River Channel Expansion Account for the purpose of providing engineering, surveying, and testing services for the expansion project.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 21 by a vote of five to zero.
All right, seeing none, all those in favor of Article 21 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 22, to see if the town will vote to transfer the sum of $3,411 from the Waterways Improvement Wage Fund to the Waterways Improvement Fund, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer the sum of $3,411 from the Waterways Improvement Wage Fund to the Waterways Improvement Fund.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 22 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 22. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 22 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 23, see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of $414,450 for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for fiscal year 2020. Said sum to be raised from $414,450 in receipts of the enterprise, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate the following sums for the operation of the Kids Club Enterprise Fund for FY 2020. Personnel: $309,400. Benefits: $44,800. Operating expenses: $60,250. Total: $414,450. Such sums to be raised from $414,450 in receipts of the enterprise.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 23 by a vote of six to zero.
I did get a second. Discussion on Article 23. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 23 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 24, see if the town will vote to appropriate and transfer from the fiscal year 2020 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to the sum of $40,000 to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, including any necessary costs related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Cotton.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to appropriate and transfer the sum of $40,000 from the FY 2020 Community Preservation Fund estimated revenues to the Community Preservation Committee Administrative and Operating Expense Account pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter 44B, Section 5, including any necessary costs related thereto, as recommended by the Community Preservation Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 24 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 24. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 24 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 25, see if the town will vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and/or upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements between the Board of Health and residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action related thereto. Mr. O'Hara.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to continue participation in the Community Septic Management Program and the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust for the purpose of making loans to residents of the town for repairing and upgrading residential septic systems pursuant to agreements made between the Board of Health and the residential property owners, including all costs incidental and related thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 25 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussions on Article 25. Seeing none, all those in favor of Article 25 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 26, see if the town will vote to amend Section E of Section 174-5G Light Industrial Overlay District to read as follows: Base zoning dimensional requirements defined in the Land Space Requirements Table in Section 174-31 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw shall apply in the Light Industrial Overlay District. The design and construction of buildings and structures and site designs within the Light Industrial Overlay District shall conform to Design Guidelines for Cape Cod, designing the future to honor the past, prepared by the Cape Cod Commission and Community Vision, Inc., as approved by the Cape Cod Commission on September 1994, 2nd Edition, March 1998, and its addendums, Contactual Design on Cape Cod, as approved by the Cape Cod Commission on October 1, 2009, copies of which shall be on file and available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Department Office, and shall be subject to approval by the permitting authority, or take any other action related thereto. Ms. Sherman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move the town vote to amend Section 174-45.6E, which is the Corrected Zoning Bylaw Section Reference for the subject text amended relative to the Light Industrial Overlay District, to read as follows: Base zoning dimensional requirements defined in the Land Space Requirements Table in Section 174-31 of the Mashpee Zoning Bylaw shall apply in the Light Industrial Overlay District. The design and construction of buildings and structures and the sites designed within the Light Industrial Overlay District shall conform to Design Guidelines for Cape Cod, designing the future to honor the past, prepared by Cape Cod Commission and Community Vision, Inc., as approved by the Cape Cod Commission on September 1994, 2nd Edition, March 1998, and its addendum, Contactual Design of Cape Cod, as approved by the Cape Cod Commission on October 1, 2009, copies of which shall be on file and available for review at the Office of the Town Clerk and the Planning Department Office, and shall be subject to approval by the permitting authority.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 26 by a vote of five to zero.
Planning Board, are they in the House?
Good evening, yes. Mary Wagan, 35, Eschmert Road, Chair, Planning Board. On May 1, 2019, the Planning Board, after holding a public hearing, voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 26, provided the article is modified to amend Section 174-45.6E, the Light Industrial Overlay District of the zoning bylaw, and not Section E of Section 174-5G. In the title of your warrant, under Article 26, where it references Section E of Section 174-5G, that's the wrong reference to the zoning bylaw.
Okay.
Mr. Moderator, if I may, I make a motion to amend Article 26 to strike the words, quote, "to amend Section E of Section 174-5G," end quote, and replace with the words, quote, "to amend Section 174-45.6E," end quote, to correctly reflect the section of the zoning bylaw which defines the Light Industrial Overlay District.
Okay. Town Council reminded me that that correction, which you're correct, was already read in the main motion, so we don't need the amendment. Discussion on Article 26. Seeing none, we need a two-thirds vote on Article 26. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 27, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Motion made and seconded. Mr. Cahalan.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to amend Section 174-25, Caption 10, Accessory Uses...
I-10.
I-10. And Section 174-25, Caption E, Caption 2, Principal Retail Business and Consumer Service Establishments of the Zoning Bylaws, as set forth in Article 27, with the exception of the phrase "are," to take any other action relating thereto.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 27 by a vote of five to zero.
Planning Board.
Okay, Mary Wagan, again, Chair of the Planning Board. On May 1, 2019, the Planning Board, after holding a public hearing, voted unanimously to recommend approval of Article 27 as presented.
Discussion on Article 27. Seeing none, I need a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 27, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Article 28, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
Mr. Gottlieb.
Mr. Moderator, I move the town vote to approve Article 28 as printed in the warrant, with the exception of the phrase "or take any other action relating thereto."
Second.
Second. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 28 by a vote of four to one.
Yes, sir.
Hi, yes, Brian Baumgartl, DeGrasse Road, and also Chair of the Board of Health. Given the result of Article 20, as the Board, we would like to make a motion to withdraw Article 28 from the warrant.
We want to withdraw Article 28.
Yes.
All right, let me take... Do I have a second? It will be a motion to take no action. Can't withdraw it, because it's already printed.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right. Let's go over here. Go ahead, sir.
Sky wires at 84 Cuyahoga Avenue. I have a couple of concerns, I'll try to cut to the quick on it. First of all, a single family, let's call them family units, available in the town, and I'm looking at a population, basically 18 to 25, 26 years old, of kids who live in the town, and they're looking to move out and get out on their own. So, you could call it maybe a family housing or sharing, house-sharing situation. I can tell you, I'm sure, that you're going to lose a lot of availability. This is a... The way you read this four and a half page, it's almost like you're getting chained with if you don't comply with it, you know, if you're a homeowner. So, it's a double negative right there. That's one of my primary concerns. There's also, we're getting into the summer season here, and we've got the international students coming in. They work in, you know, supermarkets, 45 Dunkin' Donuts in Mashpee. So, what's going to happen? Do they bring their own tents? I don't know.
All right. So, before we get into a protracted conversation about this article, there is a motion on the floor to take no action, and it's been seconded. I'll have a discussion about that. If not, let's vote on that, and if it's defeated, then we'll keep it going. So, all those in favor of taking no action on Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, no action, it's approved.
Okay, is it petition?
For Article 29, I'll take a motion to dispense with the reading.
Jerry, Jerry, can I ask a question about the previous? We took a no action. Can that be brought... Normally, if something like that happens, we use...
Jerry, Jerry, can I ask a question about the previous? We took a no action. Can that be brought... Normally, if something like that happens, we usually do indefinitely postpone, so we can bring it up again, like maybe next town meeting or something like that. But taking no action, is that the same as indefinitely postponing?
It is.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Take a motion indefinitely post... To dispense with the reading on Article 29.
So moved.
All right. Petitioner. Yes, sir?
Yes, I have a motion and a comment on Article 29.
Okay, well, make your motion.
Okay. I move the town will vote to accept the layouts as public ways of Leatherleaf Lane, Bog River Bend, Miller Farm Road, and Fern Gully Pass, neighborhood known as Child's River East, or to us, Paradise. As shown on plans entitled Road Taking Plan, Leatherleaf Road, Road Taking Plan, Bog River Bend, Road Taking Plan, Fern Gully Pass, and Miller Farm Road in Mashpee, Massachusetts, dated January 31, 2018, and prepared by Cape and Islands Engineering, which layouts shall have been filed in the office of the town clerk no later than seven days prior to the date of vote hereunder, and to authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire by gift, purchase, or eminent domain, taking any land necessary for the purposes of such ways as laid out, and further to appropriate the sum of $408,030 to the Child's River East Roadways account. And to raise said appropriation, the Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, be authorized to borrow at one time or from time to time, under and pursuant to Chapter 44, Section 7 or 8, or any other enabling authority for such purpose or taking and layout, which including cost of constructing such ways and legal financing and other costs incidental and related thereto, and further authorize the Board of Selectmen to assess betterments to the owners of such land abutting these ways. Any premium received by the town upon the sale of any bonds or notes approved by this vote, lest any such premium applied, to the payment of the cost of issuance of such bonds or notes, may be applied to the payment of costs approved by this vote in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 20 of the General Law, thereby reducing the amount authorized to be borrowed to pay such costs by a like amount.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 29 by a vote of six to zero.
Okay. And I understand the Planning Board makes no recommendation regarding this article. So your comments, sir?
My comment is very simple. This has been a three-year, almost four-year ordeal for our neighborhood. I want to thank Mr. Collins, our town manager, and his staff for guiding, for making things transparent, and for helping us along the way. He doesn't get enough credit, and I want to make sure he gets it tonight.
Any further discussion on Article 29? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 29 has moved? Needs two-thirds. Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Paradise, safe. Article 30, to see if the town will vote to replace the holiday, Christopher Columbus Day, to Indigenous Peoples' Day, or take any other action related thereto. I have a motion. Yes, sir?
Yes, Brian Whedon, 32, Leamington Lane. I move the town vote to replace the holiday, Christopher Columbus Day, to Indigenous Peoples' Day.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded. Board of Selectmen. Board of Selectmen recommends...
The Board of Selectmen recommends approval of Article 30 by a vote of three to two.
Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 30 by a vote of three to one, with one abstention.
Any discussion on Article 30? Yes, sir?
Yes, just for point of clarification, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe currently recently changed this to Indigenous Peoples' Day, as well as the school committee changed the school calendar, so now we're looking for the town to do the same.
Okay. Any other discussion on Article 30? All right, all those in favor of Article 30 has moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, fastest. Article 31. See if the town will vote to establish a Town of Mashpee Youth Commission. The commission shall be composed of five members, all residents of the town between the ages of 14 to 21 years of age. Members of the commission will be appointed by the Town of Mashpee Board of Selectmen, and shall be comprised of a chairperson, vice-chairperson, secretary, and two members at large, or take any other action related thereto. Yes, sir?
Brian Whedon, 32, Leamington Lane. I move the town... I move the town vote to establish a Town of Mashpee Youth Commission. The commission shall be composed of five members, all residents of the town, between the ages of 14 to 21 years of age. Members of the commission will be appointed by the Town of Mashpee's Board of Selectmen, and shall be comprised of a chairperson, vice-chairperson, secretary, and two members at large.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Board of Selectmen recommended approval by a vote of four to zero. Finance Committee.
Finance Committee recommends approval of Article 31 by a vote of six to zero.
Discussion on Article 31. Yes, sir?
Yes, just once again, for point of clarification, for those of you that don't know, I'm a youth advocate within the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe. I established the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribal Youth Council back in 2009 to give our youth in our community a voice. And looking at town governance, you know, we have a lot of great students and young people in our town, but they don't really have a place within town governance. You know, we have student councils, the Boys and Girls Club, so on and so forth. So I'm really looking for the town to approve this, so that we can give our young people a voice in town government.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of Article 31, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous. Two more. Article 32. See if the town will vote to replace the Town of Mashpee seal and give direction to the Historical Commission to lead this project while providing updates to the Board of Selectmen or take any other action related thereto. Mr. Whedon.
Yes. I move the town vote to replace the Town of Mashpee seal and give direction to the Historical Commission to lead this project while providing updates to the Board of Selectmen.
Do I have a second? Motion made and seconded. Board of Selectmen does not recommend approval by a vote of three to one. Finance Committee.
The Finance Committee does not recommend approval of Article 32 by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, discussions on Article 32. Yes, sir?
Yes, I'm the original petitioner of this article. I also serve as a member of the Historical Commission in town, and I find it important, because when you look at our town, we're such a beautiful, unique town with such a beautiful history, and I feel as though this replica of the state seal is something that doesn't really depict the history of Mashpee. For those of you that don't know, the history here, you know, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts was not the friends of the Wampanoag people. You know, that was shown throughout many times, and we didn't want to be citizens of, you know, the Commonwealth, and we decided to still be an Indian district, which regardless of how we voted, still was passed, and citizenship was forced upon us. I know that the state is also looking at changing the state seal. To my understanding, the recommendation from the Finance Committee was no because of the cost that's affected to this. Somewhere it's around $100,000. We're also looking at, you know, 2020 coming up with a 400-year anniversary, where they'll actually be busing people from Plymouth down here to Mashpee, as this is one of the largest native, living native history communities in our area. You know, when you hear certain things about this town, we just voted to spend $50,000 on 150th anniversary. You know, that money possibly could have been gone to this project. Also, we talked about revenue available, last year was around $9 million, but yet this isn't a priority. This doesn't have a cost effect to it, if we do it in phases throughout the years, when we buy new police vehicles, so on and so forth. And it's just a reminder of the genocide and things that have happened to our people. For people that don't understand, you know, you can equivalent this to no different than the swastika or the Confederate flag, and I personally, as a Mashpee Wampanoag tribal member and a citizen of this town, don't think that this depicts our history the best way. You know, if you look at the Water Commission and the Water District, they have a beautiful seal that depicts a native woman by the water, and you know, that's a beautiful seal that represents us, and I just feel like this doesn't... You can't win them all, but you know, Gandhi said, "Be the changes you wish to see in the world," and that's all I'm trying to do. Why now are we doing it now? Because it's taken a 26-year-old young person who's gone through this town and has grown up, you know, with my pride and my culture, with my long hair being teased my whole life about being Wampanoag, and we're not your mascots. I mean, ultimately, that's what it boils down to, too. But you know, when it comes down to all of this stuff, I'm just thinking that, and I think that it's time for this town to right a lot of the wrongs that were done to our people, and you know, we already passed the Columbus Day, the Youth Commission, you know, you can't win them all, so if this doesn't pass, it doesn't pass, but I think this town definitely needs to discuss this issue.
Yes, sir.
My name is Tyler Maciel, and I have done research into the Mashpee seal and the Massachusetts seal. Massachusetts seal was adopted in 1971 to replace the pine tree flag and the pine tree emblem, and the sword that is in controversy, the broadsword, is representative of the Revolutionary War and not the genocide of Native American people. Though egregious things have been done towards the past in regards to Native Americans, the seal in question is not promoting anything to do with the genocide of Native American people. I oppose this measure on practicality of costs and just the actual history behind it. And the motto on the Massachusetts flag is, "By the sword, we achieve peace, achieve peace through liberty." That is referring to the Revolutionary War and not to anything that would be in regards to the Native American genocide, which is a tragedy and is horrible. But the flag and the emblem of Mashpee is partially based on the Massachusetts emblem, which is in itself based on the Revolutionary War and not the genocide of Native Americans. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
Richard DeSarg, 65, Shields Road. When town seals first came about, back in colonial times, the reason for the seal was so that each town would have, be able to show its own uniqueness. In 1898, Massachusetts said, "All towns have to have a seal." We didn't have one in Mashpee. And so what Massachusetts did is they simply sent us a seal, which basically is a replica. They didn't even have originality. They sent a replica of the seal of Massachusetts. If you look around at the other town seals, if you look at Falmouth, Falmouth has the Knobscallite, they have the whaling ship, they have the Cranberries that are there. If you look at Orleans, they have their windmill. If you look at Edgertown or Nantucket, they have the whale, or Corvance Town has the Mayflower compact. It's the uniqueness that is in that town. And Mashpee, I think, has equal pride, in fact, I think more so, of our history, of our culture, and our geographic features, that we can make our own seal and not have one that was given to us by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And the issue of price, it can be phased in. It doesn't have... When stationary runs out, then you order the new, stationary with the new seal. Same with the vehicles. It may take some time, but it doesn't have to cost anything. We can phase this in. It's also to be a great point for our 150th anniversary that is coming up, and we can finally have a seal that is of Mashpee, for Mashpee, and by Mashpee, and we can tell the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, they can take their seal back.
Ava Costello, 58, Santuapon Road. I just want to say ditto after what Richard just said. I just don't understand why a town that has the attributes that Mashpee has would not want those attributes reflected in its town's seal. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I also want to encourage a vote for this and just comment on something that affected me. I had no idea I'd be saying this, but I moved here about five years ago, and I had gone soon after to the Powwow, and there was one particular moment that really struck me, just really blew me away and surprised me, is, you know, in this event that celebrated the cultural heritage of these Navy, Native people, that at the front of their line marching in, they would carry the American flag. That really, really humbled me. And I see Mashpee as a really special place, possibly, a really special place, if we can... There's some real opportunities here for showing something in our nation as far as living together that can really make a difference and really say something. Mashpee's a special place.
Irene Chekovich, Sunset Strip. I'm a strong supporter of this petition. I was the registrar at Bridgewater State when they changed not only their college name from college to university, but also their seal. I understand there's a strong concern about cost, which I also share, but perhaps a petitioner would agree to amend it, the petition, to say that this could be phased in over time, so that as letterhead is used up, then there isn't the cost of throwing things out. I urge everyone to vote for this and also to formally say that it would be phased in to minimize cost.
Okay, so we have to stop for a minute. General bylaws tell us that our town meeting is over, so I will take a motion to extend for 15 minutes.
Motion to extend town meeting by 15 minutes?
Hold on. So I need a motion to extend town meeting. We'll do it till 10:30. Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Do I have a second? I need two-thirds vote. All those in favor of extending town meeting to 10:30, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Brian Hyde, 7 Bryan's Lane. I stand here tonight as, reading the article, which my colleague, Mr. Whedon, had written, to see if the town will vote to replace the town seal, Mashpee seal, and give direction to the Historical Commission to lead this project. I am standing before you, the taxpayers of Mashpee this evening, about the appropriateness of that last phase, that phrase. We are historians on the Historical Commission. We do not want to be involved in a political aspect of this article. Do you want a new town seal? Great, yes, no, that's your choice, but I don't believe that is the... Giving it to the Historical Commission is appropriate. I've been on the Historical Commission, worked with the Historical Commission for over 30 years. Rosemary Burns, a town historian, who has been with the Historical Commission for almost 40, and other members that have spoken tonight, are being asked to replace the town seal or lead the direction of the town seal. This topic has never appeared on any of our agendas. We meet monthly. It has never been formally discussed at a posted, agenda-driven meeting with a quorum. Therefore, it does not have the support of the Mashpee Historical Commission. Where did this come from, that this group is being tasked with this task? Why is the commission being charged with this task? We haven't even had the courtesy of a phone call, an email, a text message, or a letter saying, "Hey, would you guys like to take on this task?" So more than one longtime Mashpee Historical Commission member believes that redesigning or changing the town seal is not within the province of the Mashpee Historical Commission. We cite Mass General Law, and I asked Turner Costello to confirm, that Chapter 40, the Powers and Duties of Cities and Towns, Section 8D, Historical Commission Establishment Powers and Duties, cites, "A city or town which accepts this section may establish a historical commission herein called the commission, for the preservation, protection, and development of the historical or actual ecological assets of such town." So I'd ask the town council, is it accepted practice for town meeting to mandate a volunteer board to commit a task which opposes its mission? Now, I'm okay with a new town seal. My issue is this Historical Commission being charged with the task. So I'd like to amend this motion. I would like the Mashpee Historical Commission, whose mission is to preserve and protect historical or ecological assets of the town, have recently been involved in issues such as town seal, police brutality, genocide, climate change, things that oppose our mission. And I am standing here tonight to say, we want to stick to preserving and protecting the history of Mashpee, the great, rich history of the Mashpee. So recognizing that conflict is ideological and not personal... So recognizing that conflict is ideological and not personal, I propose the following amendment, to see if the town will vote to replace the town of Mashpee seal and give direction to the Board of Selectmen or take any other action related thereto.
Okay. So you're moving to amend. Do I have a second on the amendment? Did I hear a second? Second, okay. All right, discussions on the amendment. All right, seeing none.
Town council's going to clarify so we get it right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The previous speaker's point is well taken, and it is certainly within the scope of the article to designate the selectmen as opposed to the Historical Commission as the party to oversee this process. The Mass. General Law he cited relates to the Historical Commission's functions. Mass. General Law, Chapter 40, Section 47 specifically says, "Town meeting shall establish a town seal." So nothing will change until this body votes to establish a new town seal. The way I read the petitioned article here is to get the ball rolling on a process, to come up with a new town seal, to come back to you folks to vote it. So I believe the amendment is appropriate to the extent that it's streamlining or tailoring the process by which a substitute town seal will be presented to town meeting in the future, but it will require another vote of town meeting under Chapter 40, Section 47, in order for a new seal to be ultimately adopted.
Great. Looked I'd be able to hold three or four different seals that everybody can vote on. All right, so there's a motion to amend. That's what you're voting on. All those in favor to amend, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Right, the amendment is before you now. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of the amended motion, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, unanimous. All right, Article 33. I take a motion to dispense with the reading.
So moved.
And a second? Second. All right.
Over here.
Ah, there you are. Okay, sorry about that. Go ahead.
Barbara Lynn Barbie, 73 Surf Drive. I move the town vote to adopt the following resolution to protect the civil liberties of Mashpee residents. We join here with the towns of Eastham, Dennis, Wellfleet, Provincetown, Brewster, and Truro to adopt a resolution to protect the civil liberties of our residents.
Okay. So, just so we're clear, town council, my belief it's a non-binding issue, but go ahead, town.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Just for clarification for the benefit of the town meeting members, this is a resolution petition. It's a non-binding petition asking for the sentiment or the sense of the town meeting. The purposes and intent of the article as presented is merely to gauge the sentiment of the voters in the town. It will not change federal law, it will not change state law, it will not alter the legal scheme under which town of Mashpee officers have to act. And that's an executive and an administrative branch function to determine how to act in accordance with applicable law. This is strictly a non-binding sense of the meeting article, and I just wanted to make that clear for the voters.
All right, do I have a second? All right, got a second. My understanding is Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee take no position on this article. I'll go up here.
My name is Jay Marie Stevenson, and live at 135 Sampson's Mill Road. I'm going to actually wear two hats tonight, very briefly. First, I am the chairperson of the Mashpee Inclusion and Diversity Committee. And you may, may or may not know about this because it's a relatively new committee. And we do have five purpose statements, one of which is quoted in the petition. And all of our purpose statements are readily available on the town website, as is the mission statements of the Police Department, and therefore, this one could appropriately be included in the proposed resolution. However, our committee was not directly involved in the drafting of that petition article, so to avoid any confusion or implied opinion, the committee is taking no position, as with the selectmen. We want the voters to decide on this. I would, however, add that one of our committee's stated duties is to facilitate public education in the areas of diversity and discrimination and community building. And as a chairperson, I am going to ask our committee to consider developing some forums relevant to the issues and concerns that we are reflecting in tonight's proceedings. Now, I would like to put on another hat and tell you that I am a petitioner for this article. And I was asked in part to do this because I am a naturalized citizen, a very proud one, and with a resulting interest in, in issues pertaining to immigration. And the fact that we now have a Cape Cod Coalition for Safe Communities and a number of Cape Towns, Cape Cod towns, feeling the need to protect the civil liberties of our citizens and our non-citizens, I feel that it reflects the negative forces, the misunderstandings, and the misinformation that is abounding at our national level, which is fueling our fears. And to me, it is vital that we band together to illustrate how our community, Mashpee, is a welcoming and safe one, not just for our residents, but to all who visit and travel through. And it's important that we support our Police Department in continuing to make it so. And I hope you will support, as stated, this is just a statement of support for welcoming and keeping our community feeling safe on all levels. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hi, it's Arno Drifwood Circle. Bruins one, by the way, three-nothing. Yeah, my comment on Article 33 is, basically, the way I read this, it's the first adoption to create a sanctuary city in Mashpee. Secondly, you're asking us to vote here tonight without having any understanding of how our Board of Selectmen feels, except for one. And I think it's unfair that you ask us to pass or not pass this resolution without knowing how our town leaders feel. Thank you.
Guess I don't have to watch my DVR game tonight.
Marjorie Hext, Hoopole Road. I would like to support this article. I was one of the petitioners, and I'm very happy that the town of Mashpee Police Department is community-oriented, service-oriented, and already has these values. I think it's important for our town to vote on this. The selectmen can follow the town vote, but we need to be a welcoming community and join the other towns of the Cape who've already adopted a similar resolution. It isn't binding, but it is worthwhile doing in this perilous time we live in where there is so much hate.
Okay, going to call the question. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Sharon D. Francesco, 80 Cituit Road. This is, this is unlike any article that I've witnessed in the many years that I've been coming to town meeting. You know, this non-binding, this get-a-sense-of-things, I didn't know that was our mission here. To read the explanation, "Its goal is to reinforce adherence to current law." Are we not adhering to current law? And to show our support and thanks for current practice? If we're doing something wrong, that absolutely needs to be addressed. And maybe if the police chief is here tonight, I don't know if he is, he might address that. But I have to agree with the previous speaker, who said, "It would be nice to know." If we can't know how the selectmen feel, perhaps we could know why they don't want to let us know how they feel. You know, maybe it's that back door that I should be worried about. But it's just a, it's an unusual article. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Mr. Galway.
I've been asked twice by the audience how I feel. I supported this article, and I'll tell you why. The core of it, in my mind, was the provision that says, the petition to forbid all local and non-local officials in Mashpee in the absence of probable cause of criminal activity. And that says it all. The only point to this, in my mind, is to reaffirm the current practice that's embodied in our Police Department right now, which is simply adherence to people's due process rights, to not be stopped and searched and have, subject to arrest without probable cause. And if you don't think that your Fourth Amendment rights on protection from unfair search and seizure are as important as the First Amendment rights and the Second Amendment rights that we heard about, you're making a big mistake. Because the minute you start to decide whose Fourth Amendment rights are okay, that's fine, as long as you're on the right side of that conversation. But the history in this country is, you can be on the wrong side of that conversation, and then you're in big trouble. So the minute you start giving away and taking opportunity not to say that adherence to the full range of constitutional protections that are available to everybody in this country aren't important, you're making a big mistake. Do I think we need this because it corrects a practice that we have? No, I don't. I have full confidence in our Police Department for the practices that have been in place at least as long as Rodney Collins was chief and carried on by Chief Carline. But to take the opportunity to say that we think a Fourth Amendment protections are important and not take it sends a dangerous message. That's my view.
All right. Last two, and then we're going to call it. We'll go here first.
Mr. Moderator, I would ask that you call the question, please.
Read my mind. Go ahead.
Aidan Gadu to Nancy Lane. I don't have too much to say. I believe that, considering that this is a non-binding agreement that holds the sentiment of the inhabitants of Mashpee, I see there being no particular reason to contend us making this statement, as it neither acts against the current law enforcement within the town. There is no statement that there is an issue, that, you know, we're going to do this to solve that. It only reaffirms our town sentiment to the commitment of the maintenance of our liberties as American citizens. There is no sense of, once we do this, the next step is this, considering it is completely non-binding. So that's all I have.
Okay. Last word, Mr. Cahill.
I'm going to speak for myself, but I think I'm speaking for the four selectmen that voted against it. I have total, total confidence in our police force, and I would never want to think that I was questioning them or dictating them to do anything if they can't figure out the Fourth Amendment on their own without us telling us. We should probably have a different police force.
Okay, we're going to call the question. All those in favor of Article 33 as moved, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Try it one more time. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
All right, in fairness, because people have louder voices, we'll take one last hand count. All those in favor, raise your cards. All right, it is approved 85 to 72.
Take a motion to adjourn.
Take a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Thank you very much.